Last, last time I made comments about, I thought there was, there was only a comment made that. I, I thought that the decrease. In uh, property taxes was a little low and but I also said overall, I had discussed. With Josh Haas. Trustee Haas, that is, that I, you know, that in budgets pass that I thought, you know, compared to that, that this budget was fair. And uh, I, I thought overall they did a good job with the budget. But that uh, that I think, you know, we should further in the future, and I made these comments and. And I'm not sure why they weren't included in there, but that's either here or there. But uh, I, I made the comment that I, I wished that in the future that few, uh, future decreases could be made if. That's, that was allowable because I think that well, we want to, uh, we're here to save taxpayer dollars as best as we can because. Uh, times are tough and people are trying to save their money and they're trying to make the most of their bucks, so.
Yep.
So if that could be added on to the, the last comments that I had made during the budget hearings, I would appreciate that.
And I do recall that happening, so.
So you'd like me to add to the minutes that. Taxes should be kept low, you discussed this with trustee Haas, you felt that this budget is fair. And that you would like to see future decreases made to the property tax.
Right, but I mean, the, the decrease in taxes was in there already. I, um, but I, I added after that, that the fact that I thought because of my discussion with trustee Haas. The overall, the budget was fair and I thought they did a fairly good job with it.
Okay.
Uh, compared to budgets pass. Uh, and but then the future that, uh, you know, future decreases should be sought in, in the property taxes.
Alright. I'm sorry if I got that incorrectly, fix it and.
That's, that's, that's alright, that happens.
You wrote that on the tip, you can get that off the tip.
So yes, I'll listen to it again.
Yeah.
Um, and that's how I got those statements in the past, but I must have missed something, I'll go back again.
Well, I mean, there's a lot to copy, so I, I get it, so.
Alright, so with that, I'd uh, entertain a motion to approve the concept agenda with those corrections.
Motion approved, consent agenda with amendments.
Second.
Alright, I have a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Alright.
Opposed, motion carries. Alright, next we have a report on village committees by the joint fire and EMS committee. So I know Josh, either Josh or Don, if you guys want to take that or Chris.
Yeah, I'll grab it quick. Didn't talk about much, just kind of talk about continuing the path of looking at combining fire departments, um, right now seems like everyone's in a. Pretty good spot, or at least they feel like they're in a good spot, but we're still having positive discussions, know, we know that. Um, we're gonna have to do something eventually down the road, um, we're very thrilled with the EMS funding that we received from the county and moving forward with that, um. And continuing to hire, so it's just continuing the conversation, like I said, seems like a lot of departments are at least open to communicating, but we've got a lot, little ways to go here, but at least we're. Moving forward, so like I said, as long as we continue to keep going in that direction, kind of. Forge your own path, I think it's better that way than having someone else dictate what we should do up on the north end of the county, so, um, there was a positive. Uh, meeting, Chris went over, um, some of the stuff in the draft. And seems like it's very well reviewed, but right now we're just kind of slowly taking it one step at a time.
Excellent, anything anybody would like to add or any questions of trustee Haas?
Yeah, um, Judge has got a comment in the, in the paper tonight. That uh, the town of Fredonia must have gotten. I mentioned something at the meeting with respect to uh. This endeavor being mostly focused on ambulance service. And when we get to a point where we can start adding on. Fire activities. We can do that, but I think, um. Those discussions really have no place now until we get the ambulance. Set up and get it working and get everybody in agreement, whatever, I would hate for this whole thing to fall apart just because we jump into fire trucks too soon. And that was, that was a big worry, the expenses of, of buildings that are owned by private corporations. And apparatus and things of that nature, that's not what we're looking at in. Bolstering the ambulance service and improving our level of care and our response time. That's most important and that's what we have to concentrate on so that we don't have people misunderstanding things and putting comments like that in paper.
Right. I appreciate those words, I appreciate you guys, uh.
Would you agree with that?
Yeah, well, yeah.
Alright, any other questions for any involved in that committee? If not, we're gonna move on then to items for discussion and or action. The first one that we have is a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-three and adopting the village of Fredonia twenty twenty-four levy. Um, again, Chris, I don't know if you want, we've gone over this however many times through our budget process, I don't know if you want to speak to it at all, or if the board wants to just kind of.
I guess I have no further comments, because you're allowable, I think, if you can add your general budget with a three point three percent increase, they're allowed to relax based on the perspective of them, plus our, our.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-three dash.
Alright, I have a motion on the table.
A second.
And I have a second, right, I will call the question, then, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Next, we have a motion to approve the village of Fredonia twenty twenty-four annual budget. Again, this is the budget that's been before you that was put together through the finance committee, uh, CPI, I'm sorry, the, yeah, capital. Improvement projects have been approved by finance and by this board. And now it's a formality of approving our entire budget, which we have had. For the public to take a look at as well as us in hearing, I don't believe any comments from the general public on it. Are there any further questions on the budget?
Is there any outside comments in sort of meeting notices or anything like that regarding the budget? I haven't received any questions from anyone, I was out the last two days, but. Since we've posted, since you guys have started your work, we haven't received any public questions.
No questions from you guys. So I got one more for you. Um, since the, since it, since it is part of the budget, the hundred thousand dollars that we, uh, have earmarked for the splash. I was at the meeting last night and there was one thing that I walked away that was. Still kind of unclear, um, but I wanted to clarify it with the board in the presence. So a few meetings ago, we approved this hundred thousand dollars earmarked. On the condition that the rest of the money for this splash pad would be raised through public donation and other sources. If that total amount did not be raised, then this project would not happen and that hundred thousand dollars would go somewhere else. Now, what was unclear last night is. Because this, the, the, the meetings since we approved that. The, the parks and, uh, you know, friends of Fredonia have, have met and they come up with this two-tiered plan. So what's unclear to me is, are we raising money and pushing go when we hit tier one? Or? Does everybody understand it the way I did originally, where we need to dispel nearly three hundred thousand dollars before we break ground?
Yeah.
So that's what's unclear to me and I, I kind of like to have it cleared up before we approve this, this project, since that hundred thousand dollars is in.
Fair. Well, so I just want to give a little bit of clarification to that because that was a question that I had and I had actually, uh, instructed a couple of people, I see your numbers. I had actually instructed a couple of people to, um. Put this on the next board meeting, but as it is presented and this is part of the budget for this next coming year, I think it is important for us to discuss. When we first approved that, it was based on, again, this whole, this whole splash pad being done and fundraising being completed for the entire amount, and I think after that meeting is when. Um, Brian from CRS, he had talked to us about, oh, by the way, you know, this is really two phased in the, in the sense that to get a splash pad built. And the concrete and all the infrastructure and the jets and everything that was there and put in. You really only need this much and then the features are individual features that go from there for the second, for the second tier, so, or the second phase of it, so. I think it's a fair question because I think when we made that decision, I feel like we didn't know that that might be an opportunity for us to do that and to have, um, you know, corporate sponsors actually buy. Individual features on the splash pad, so I do think that that's an important, uh, discussion for us to talk about here. Now, let's go with Bruce first because he had his hand up over there.
I just thought that the, um, hundred thousand dollars of ARPA funds that was reallocated to get this happening was not proper use. I've been against it. The whole time. I think it's a pipe dream right now. What happens, happens, but if it's in the budget, I won't vote for that.
Any other comments?
The uh. The two tiers or the two, um, years of the project, working for a full pad is, uh, a new concept that I was fully. Introduced to and explained last night.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I think that makes it, um. utterly more possible to get this done within the time constraints. The splash pad itself may not be totally completely done in three or four years, there may be two or three jets that are yet to have someone donate. An upright feature for, um, we're gonna have enough steps and places to place things. On there to, uh, have a really full, um, splash pad. What we need to do in one chunk in the first year is get. The base set up, get all the plumbing in the ground, get the discharge sewer in the ground and all that kind of stuff. Um, get the concrete forward, get the landscaping and everything all done so that every jet. And the whole thing is in and is functioning. And, uh, we probably will have maybe a couple of upright features. That, that first year, we will have a bunch of jets in the lower area that will be, uh. For like younger kids that they can. Trip the go and then for four minutes it's gonna be squirting and whatever, um, but I don't expect that we're gonna have every single. Of the, um, hundred and fifty five thousand that was, I guess, for, uh.
The features?
The, the, like tier two features. The upright ones and the ones with the linels and handle lines and, and all that other stuff. Um, those are expensive features and we have the ability to put those in as we take supplements. So if we can, if we can raise the, uh, original hundred and eighty-eight thousand, I think it was. And we, of which we have a hundred thirty-five raised already, our hundred and thirty-five from donors that have gone forward already. Um, we should be able to raise all of that so that we can plant this thing and it's done, and all we have to do is add to it in the years to come. Uh, so I think that, I think it's a good plan, I think it's a doable plan, I think it's something that. Just like their freedom park that took us a few years to get the trees in, um, the tent as they call it. And number of, and the sidewalks done, whatever, we can do these things and have really nice facilities. For the, but sometimes it takes just a couple, three years to, to get it done with a community that, so. Um, I've, I approve one hundred percent of, of, of what we're planning to do with it, especially since they redesigned the, uh, the implementation of, of this. It's become a lot more fun.
I guess my only, uh, concern would be, and I, you know. Thinking of totally conservative whole year just because that's how I, that's how I fly, um. What if, what if we get this pad built, stage one? And the corporate donors, the big donors don't come through, so we don't have the upright features, you know, and we just have this flat pad. Is there, is that a concern or? Are we ha, are we content with the possibility of just having the, uh. The jets, I mean, it, it'll be a functional splash pad, no matter what, it just will be less.
Not for a hundred grand, you're not gonna get that. And, uh, I, I'm behind, uh, Rick, uh, because there's, that's the, the deal that you guys made was that. Uh, or said is that we would raise those funds before we spent that hundred grand, right?
That's why we're here talking about it.
Honestly?
I want to come to a consensus on that, make sure everybody.
So we can't start something and spend money, where does that money come from?
Well, right, and so again, I think the whole issue or not issue, but the whole reason this is coming up is because there was information that was brought to light that there's a lot of communities that do it this way. So, um, the guy, Brian was there last night and he was talking about, you know, different communities, Beansville is one of them, that's doing it right now. Um, they're, you know, they're scheduled, I believe it's next year to start breaking ground.
They're not Dean's but.
No, we're not, we're Fredonia, but that doesn't. I don't know what that has to do with anything that we're discussing right now, but regardless, what I'm trying to say is. Some of these projects, whether it's a playground or a splash pad or a pavilion or something like that, sometimes they start out and then they do start. You know, going, going from there, so again, this is a discussion for it, I respect your opinion, I respect everybody's opinion. As Rick said, I think we need to come to a consensus as to what we want to do. Tiffany, go ahead.
So my concern is we're learning something to Fredonia, right, we want the splash pad, we wanted to make a statement, we're going. To have this nice thing that we're bringing to our community, my concern is if we break ground on the first phase. It's great, but it could be better, right? So we can make it, we can make it grand and amazing and have this awesome place for kids to go and have some fun with the additional features and things like that. I perception would hate to have it open and a grand opening of a concrete pad with jets in it. That's my concern. While I don't disagree with the finance side of it, I mean, I, I get where we're going with that, I'm getting why you want to do that, I think. For what we agreed on as the board a few meetings ago, we should adhere to. We want to make this grand, you know, if, if we're gonna put the money into this and put the effort into raising the funds and doing all of this for our community, I want it to be the best.
I'm gonna play devil's advocate real quick with that though, so let's say that we are. You know, December of next year and we're fifteen thousand away because we weren't able to secure one feature. Does that mean we tank the whole project?
So, from what I recall, just to refresh everyone's memory here, from kind of what Tiffany's, well, the deal was or the kind of consensus we had, so we've looked at, just so everyone knows, we've got. I'm not gonna rehash everything, but we had two hundred sixty thousand dollars, two hundred sixty-five we got from the federal government for our funds, we spent a lot of it on trucks and equipment and things that we needed to make the village go. When we got down to this amount of money, we thought it'd be nice to try and do something for the community, however, the idea was that we had and we were gonna put this hundred thousand dollars aside and have the community raise the remaining funds. If we are not able to hit that amount by deadline, which I think is January of.
April, so.
Of twenty-five, if we're not able to hit those, the fun mark, that hundred thousand dollars goes into the road maintenance plan for that year. That's what we agree upon, so what Dan's saying, in my opinion, if we're fifteen thousand dollar short, then we're fifteen thousand dollar short, and we gotta find a, either you get an opportunity to find ourselves, but a deadline's a deadline. We set it up, we're giving the community an opportunity, get me involved in it, we know the number that we have to hit. This is a nice gesture to do it, but if we can't get it done, then it moves into the next thing, which I recommended at the time was a road maintenance fund because we're putting a hundred thousand dollars a year into that. And get an extra year on it, so a deadline's a deadline and amounts an amount, if we don't hit it, then this project in my opinion should be dead.
Thank you, Josh.
I think the question to you guys, Chris, I think the question to you is, I'm even buying this splash pad, right? It's arguably phase one, phase one of the splash nine minus one thirty-five, so if you pay more. That's who is slash, yes, I think you slash power all the dollars of this features, but, but I think another question that I was trying to ask is. Is the phase, the phase one need to play, they technically just the splash pad? Is that a goal and is it meant by January, or is it the splash pad plus features, I think?
Yeah, I think we carry two hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollar number in mind when we discuss this. About fifty-three thousand.
So if that's the case, um. What?
Just. Don't miss the show, I mean, I'm for a splash pad, I have two and a half kids, because the poor girl, poor pretend, he doesn't like it, uh, but I have two hundred kids that are kind of. But. So I said, it, it does.
Alright, so as it stands right now, we have a hundred thousand dollars in the budget for twenty twenty-four for the splash pad, correct? If that's the case, uh, and I mean, we're not gonna build anything anyway, right? Is that's correct, so if we're not gonna build anything anyway in twenty twenty-four and we're not, you know. That was kind of the whole, I think, one of the reasons that we included this for this year's budget, because we thought maybe that we could get some construction or infrastructure or anything going. But if that's not the case, then, um, then if it's consensus of the board, maybe it's, maybe we take that out and keep that in reserves. Because as of right now on the budget, it's, it's saying we're taking it from reserves and we're putting it towards this project.
Which it should be earmarked for that, I guess I'm just a little confused myself, because when the gentleman was here that was explaining and he made it sound like I agree with Rick, it was a two hundred and. Almost three hundred thousand dollar project was the total, what did that include then, because the way he showed it was a bunch of.
Yes, so, so the three, the two hundred eighty-three thousand dollar project is the splash pad completed, right? All, all the infrastructure with every single upright thing that you see in those posters that we have.
Yeah.
What he's saying is a lot of communities, what they do is they take. The splash pad, they get it installed, right, they get all the infrastructure, all the concrete work, all the, uh, you know, all the jets in there and then they cap them off. And when you cap them off, it's still water that sprays up, right? And what he's saying then is you have a better opportunity to go to somebody like a Port Washington State Bank or a guy in O'Neil and say, hey, for thirteen grand, you can have this crazy wiggling palm tree or whatever that shoots water on, out of there. To which it's easier for corporate sponsors to say, yeah, we'd love to have our name on that, something like that, so that's what he's saying is a lot of funds are raised that way. Um, and that, to be fair, that whole thing came to light after we had already talked about. Raising all the funds before we started on anything, so. Yes, I, I, I agree that this discussion needs to be had, I actually was, like I said, thinking about having it in the following week because we needed to know, that was something that was very unclear from last night. Um, but again, yes, it's earmarked for a splash pad, I don't want to get away from that, but. As the budget reads right now, we're taking it out of reserves for the splash pad, correct? So if that's the case, then maybe we just leave it in reserves, if we know we're not gonna do anything and we're gonna say that we need to raise all of these funds before we do anything.
That was the deal, yeah.
Yes, I understand, that was the deal.
Do, do we have to have a resolution stating this?
Just be an amendment to the budget to take it out.
No, I know that, but I'm saying, I, I am perfectly fine with the way what we're talking about here right now makes sense. But all of us may not be here in another two years or a year and a half or whatever, I mean, do we need a resolution that says we're going to here?
Well, yeah, that.
You can change it.
Thanks, we're gonna pass another.
Right, so.
I, I would think that, uh, the hundred thousand that we have in the budget is kind of a place holder, and we do that for items in the budget. On our agenda, um, I don't think that we're at a point right now to truly evaluate. How this thing is gonna proceed through the year, we don't plan on building anything in twenty-four. So we have that whole year to monitor how funds are being donated, what's coming in, whatever, to make judgments along the way and stuff like that. And, um, we should be mindful of that and, and keep our eye on what's going on. Um, like I said last night, I really hope that the village goes near on, because I wasn't. Really thinking that we could get this much money donated from, from the village, we have corporate sponsors, we have the two big ones and stuff, so maybe it's possible and I'm hoping that. There's a certain degree of risk, uh, to me, right? But, uh, we shouldn't, we shouldn't do anything other than, we shouldn't change what we have in the book, I think that's a good enough place where we're, and we're just monitoring to.
I agree with you, Don, but my whole thing is that we need, what we need to know is where the goalpost is, I think we have to figure out what that.
Well, and I think that's what we're stating right now, it sounds like there's a consensus of the fact that we're gonna be raising the funds a hundred percent before we do anything.
So I'm fine with that, I'm gonna agree with you, Don, I think we should just leave it where it is and we figure that out next meeting or the meeting after, but we have to get an idea.
To, uh, work your way to this, just further.
Yep, okay.
No, I just, yeah, I agree, uh, that the fund should be raised and that was the agreement and, uh, last year's budget, I, I wanted that out of there and. And, uh, um, Bill actually said, just because it's in there, it doesn't mean that it can't be taken out and it was never taken out and we're dealing with it now.
Anybody else?
I have to, uh, uh, we have a certain amount of borrowing.
Let's just, is there anything else on the splash pad yet?
No, I'm in, I'm in agreement that, uh, you know, if the funds are not, definitely not raised for it, the project's not gonna go.
Yeah.
I think that's, that's been made clear and, and, uh, we're gonna monitor that.
Alright. Next topic.
Um, we've got a certain amount of borrowing and, and further in this budget for, uh, different projects or road projects and stuff like that. Um, I understand that we will be paying off Fredonia Avenue and for this year and twenty-fourth.
I played with this year, twenty-five.
And twenty-five, I thought it was twenty-four. Cause there, there's gonna be like only maybe a tenth of an annual payment or a quarter of an annual payment left, well, I, that's what's scheduled to be the payment. Anyway, the, the point, the reason why I bring it up, the point is that, um. Everything that we borrow, the debt service goes into the debt service budget and if we don't, uh, take something out. Of a size that will cover what we're adding to that, property taxes will go out next year because of debt service, unless we decide to pull services and things of that nature. Uh, it's, it's a function of the budget, if you borrow money, you have debt service, sure, you can, you can. Sure, you can, you can never earn money, but if you want to keep your taxes the same, that means we're all, okay, we don't take up the garbage. Just, just to use that now. I I want that understood that. We can borrow money to this project and stuff like that, but there's consequences for the decision.
Anything else that pertains to the budget? If not, then um, we're still looking for that motion to approve for the only twenty twenty four annual budget.
Make a motion to approve the village of Peronia twenty twenty four annual budget as proposed. Second.
Alright, I have a motion in a second. I'll call the vote. All those in favor.
Aye.
Post. Motion carries unanimously. Moving on, we have a motion to approve fire protection services agreement between the village of Saco and the village of Fredonia Fire Department.
Have a request for board consideration in front of you. Paper form.
Yeah, Brian, do you have any comments on this?
No, if you have one that goes off, that I have explained that it's territory, it's not Saco that is. Just self for going here goes through the river on the west side. Uh, over to the east side and then down to Villa Road. Um, this, the history behind this is the Dubert credit firm used to hold this contract, you know, Dubert credit department. Uh, this has changed. Two years ago and switched to the little stop with no man managing that contract with Tom Sacco. Um, and so this is, this is quite without, without some new services there. We average five fire incidents or accidents in that area a year damage, looking back maybe five, six years worth of that. So it's not a whole lot of, of. Packs on our apartments, you know, it's not a lot of stress on our apartment. Uh, handling coverage in that area is the same. Being managed, we get that money, the income from that, that, that.
Now you get paramedic also.
Yeah, yeah, yes.
My only question, um, and obviously you deal with this more than us, do you feel that the twenty four thousand is adequate that that?
I do, I do, I know. Chris had asked me uh, about an increase and. Village, but Tom Sacco was looking for a decrease in their rates when they jumped from the Dubert credit card managing it over to the Villa Sacco. Um, we were building a building of course that I haven't seen an increase. So I was just taking my minute away with that rather than uh, the decrease that the town or that Dubert credit are a huge. Uh, so it's just based on the, they cannot, the soccer board can't get around this side of the river fast.
Brian, um. Is this the second single year contract?
This one.
The second single year contract?
Yes.
Okay, then we had like a two year before that.
No, the the New York one was like three years when they did it. It was like three years in a row. This is this was when the village start took it over. They just gave us the quick. And it was done like December of the previous year. It was done in the last minute, and so they just gave us one.
Hmm, any questions for the uh, chief on this?
I make a motion to approve fire protection service agreement between the villages, Saco and the village of Peronia.
We have a motion in the second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries unanimously. Next, we have a motion to approve purchase of a twenty nineteen vac excavator not to exceed sixty five grand. If you recall at the end of last board meeting, this is what I had mentioned that was going to be coming before us this meeting. Um, this is, and actually, you know what, I'm gonna let our DPW ta- director take this one away. Why don't you tell us a little bit about it and explain where we're at?
Uh, so we'll chat a pretty small. Uh, they had issues with it or losing prime. Uh, the mower was replaced on it. When we went to go and use it, we put it together to prime, uh, do the tires eight month. Uh, the time that it's been opened and upgraded. Uh, this is, this model here ran new self for a hundred seven thousand. Wow, I think it's five hundred hours on it. He's been doing it, please, one over on it, change all the tools on there. Uh, this deal about us with some animal animals got faces. About boxes. Any excavation products we have parts that instead of taking the back on there, everything off. New contracts will work out and have been done this year, a hundred dollars in.
You're gonna dig into what budget for that with that uh, your maintenance?
Do outside service. We might have a hundred thousand outside services.
Every year you have a budget like that?
Yes, so they are spreading. I mean, yeah.
Understood.
There's a good explanation in the background analysis. We'll be spending twenty twenty three funds. And still have some of those, my boy.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, the reason why the outside services. It's more than counting up is we've been doing as much like that in house. And this will also help.
You bet.
And I, I did have a conversation with Eric on this and asked him about a million questions. And I did the kind of cost benefit analysis on it. And I don't have the numbers here for me, but we take them out and very positive.
Right, and he should be able to keep that same budget, you know, when you purchase equipment like that. Um, to maintain what good work you're doing.
Make a motion to approve purchase of our twenty nineteen VX back excavator not to exceed sixteen five thousand.
Bruce.
Bruce.
Oh, I'm sorry. Josh, I'm sorry, Josh. Okay.
Alright, I've got a motion in a second, then I'll call the vote. All those in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Uh, the next two are gonna be contracts uh, from HydroCorp. I'll have Eric explain both of them. Essentially, I believe they're the same thing, only one's commercial industrial, the other one's residential. There's two contracts. Let's. We'll start with the uh, residential one.
So HydroCorp has the. The village's residential virtual uh, back hole slash cross connection inspection, you know, just made basically saying that if. If you have something fucked up illegally, that if there would be loss of pressure in the water system. It wouldn't be pulling, but it now it's fucked up to back into the system where it would. Which I believe further in our ten percent has to be done a year. Uh, the village needs to be cycled at a minimum for ten years. So every ten years residential now coming inside. I know some people are skeptical of somebody found in the house to be a or a hybrid work. It's basically a two minute inspection. They're just making sure nothing's happening. And a lot of the problem is. Like water sources. So the the drain, which we see in a sink, you can see that there. Biggest thing. And they want people knowing and understanding it and when they're talking about it, then we like.
I don't mean to interrupt Eric, but these are contracts that we've had in the past, correct?
Uh, this would be the second of a two year. Second contract of a two year contract. So Roger had it set up in twenty one. So they're fairly new. And then commercials every two years. I'm not opposed to my suspense doing the residential. Have a local staff do it. Uh, commercials a little more in depth. I know for the high school, they say they're from forty eight dollars. And I, and that's the staff.
Understood.
Make a motion to approve both the residential and commercial contract.
Second, just to clarify, you're talking about doing the residential this time within the next.
So keep it in there. So I don't have anyone that's trained to, you know, someone would ask me, Dave, by what code is this? Or why do you say that I I don't have any of this technology? We can do the re inspections because usually HydroCorp sends it to me and said, this is what they gotta do with the supply, and I can go into that.
Okay.
But you know, to come out with a paperwork. Yeah.
They're not doing something else.
Alright, so we got a motion in a second for both, correct? Any other?
Sorry, who's second?
I do.
Thank you, Kirk.
Alright, I'll call the question. I guess we do both of them at the same time. Okay, we'll call a question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries. Alright, next we have a motion to approve preventative maintenance and technical services agreement with energetics. Again, this is from Eric. Well, you're busy this tonight.
Energetics, those are skates, they are. Monitor for water, wastewater, but they are currently rated on all. Monday's data should be all updated and ready to roll. But anything that I would need that consulting fails or crashes. They would come out Google and on this agreement would be we're purchasing hours and this year's rate the next. So every time they come out with Google and inspection or calculation, we won't be charged. Because we have this little office.
We don't get charged or we get charged at?
Often off the agreement. So if we, if I don't use it all, it just carries over. If I use it all, I suck, then. And what they give for a office, what I normally go through here. And I, I think the only year Rocker has skipped in twenty one. Or in twenty, but Rocker, part of it on Rocker is doing it, but it's been.
Any questions of the DPW director?
Make a motion to approve preventive maintenance and technical service agreement, energy, energetics.
Alright, I have a motion in a second. Call a question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries unanimously again. Alright, now Eric wants a lawnmower. Uh.
Man, this dude spends a lot of money, I can tell you that.
And he's not done.
So on the lawnmowers, uh, I have. The one that was in the bus to be replaced, the steering, the left steering failed and the drive motor failed. Uh, I have both from five grand to six.
Is that that propane?
And that's another reason why I want to take a little torpedo pace off my lawn.
Yeah, I agree.
Uh, the reason why I'm coming to you at this video is I believe yesterday the prices went up and everything due to. Well, that's not mine. Uh, so I technically have a price locked in and in accrual. Uh, we wouldn't get a bill until everyone first.
That diesel?
Uh, no, the reason why I can get two of their plus on the gas. And if you guys see the quote on there, you knock off. And I think he's trying to do this.
And this is something that the budget is for twenty twenty four anyway, and it's not gonna hit our books until twenty twenty four.
And he had.
This is a planned expense. We're just taking advantage of lower prices by doing that. Take a motion to approve purchase of the uh, twenty twenty four parts for the lawnmower, not to exceed twenty eight thousand.
Second. Alright, I've got a motion and a second. Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries unanimously. And finally, he wants a skid steer.
Alright, uh, the village is starting to stop. Does not currently have an excuse here. Uh, I know I was on for the last meeting. Uh, planning to use this part until picking air back to the field or anything, you know, kind of. I also want to use the skid loader to clean part of that because it's a lot easier and a lot faster. Um, as you know, in my, my in, in month, I'm sure you're. Uh, I don't need to buy brand new. I'm not practical and saw that can save money. Uh, this lawnmower is. It's very, it's very uh.
No, no, you're the man.
Twenty and it retails for seventy four. This is a use. Uh, again, I think there's five hundred some hours on it. By staying underneath the sixty thousand, I was able to put in there horse, bucket, a gravel, and soil. All of there.
So you guys are doing all the preventive maintenance on on these equipment that we get, mowers, the blades, the hydraulics. And all your equipment, you could do that in-house from now on, right? Alright.
We've also been doing a lot of actual stuff, road preparation for.
Yeah, I see.
So we're good on the leads too.
Was that, so we're really gonna leave a question too.
That is the plan. Final is I want to make that good for Brian. Like a big tractor tire cutting out, making push ball into the bucket, pull up faster.
And just after watching some water main breaks and, you know, some of that stuff this year, I mean, this is clearly something that he needs. It was actually quite funny trying to watch the loader do the job there.
New lawnmowers are something I look forward.
Uh, this is the question to use. That was in good shape that I can find. Uh, hold on, I. Dab it down and then for me, I could find older, but I mean, I mean farmers itself, but in their, their bees. Well, this one was, I thought, pretty decent. Uh, I went out with granite and he drove around and like, you're the one riding it, what do you think? So obviously he's bigger than me, but it showed up.
This tractor is here. Better, not to exceed sixty thousand dollars.
Alright, we've got a motion in a second. Any other deliberation? Questions, comments, concerns?
I got a question about the Brian. I know it's, yeah, it's not, it's not point of order, but we had talked about it. I don't know if I'm gonna have an opportunity to ask you. Later about that. What's going on with that?
For the salt, right? So now I'm using it. Uh, I'm not a. We do have the same in the truck, uh. It's a third of the cost. I'm using that.
Alright, I have a motion in a second. I believe, yes, I do. All those in favor?
Aye.
I opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next, we are in order to go into closed session um, for deliberation over an offer to per. Alright, I have a motion in a second. I'll start down by Kurt. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye, aye.
Alright, opposed, motion carries unanimously. Would we like to invite anybody to stay? Alright, everybody else has to clear out.
Yes, I'm a candy. Need some energy. That's something can. Fuck it, your kids.
You need to unmute yourself? Okay, I'll take your word for it. Alright, we are back in open session.
I'll make a motion to approve the offer to purchase. For eighteen thousand an acre with a four thousand dollar grading credit. And with the uh, preliminary development agreement, second.
Uh, do you want to say who that agreement is between?
Marcus and Scott Paulson use.
Alright. Alright. And I have a second?
Second.
Alright, I have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries unanimously. Looking forward to having you guys working with us in the order.
Thank you, guys.
Alright, is there any correspondence from anybody?
No.
Okay, items for future consideration, um, I have, I, well, I don't know if it's a consideration or just the talk, but if anybody has. Gone, received their municipality magazine, there's a pretty cool article on there about roadways and um, ATVs and bikes and e-bikes and. Anyway, it's interesting, so.
An interesting article is as far as uh, example, ranges too.
Yeah, so one's worth a read. Normally I don't go through it, but it's worth a read. Anything else for the good of the order? No, a motion to adjourn. A motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Alright, we are out of here at eight oh five. Thank you.